Radio Free Santa Clarita presents. The Talk of Santa Clarita. A podcast about issues involving Santa Clarita and the surrounding valley. With your host, Stephen Daniels. Episode 157. Candidate for the Santa Clarita City Council, Kelvin Driscoll. And now, let's see what the Talk of Santa Clarita is.
And remember, this is for posterity, so be honest.
Oh, we're starting again because somebody forgot to hit the record button. Kelvin, what's the wrong with you, man? Kelvin Driscoll, welcome to the Talk of Santa Clarita, take two.
Take two. Thanks for having me back.
Yeah, yeah. Let's talk a little bit about the, you are running for city council.
Yeah.
Tell me why you are running, particularly, you just ran for the Assembly race.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're jumping into a new race really quickly. Tell me why.
Yeah, certainly spent a lot of time thinking about the Assembly race and did not expect to be here. But I think with so much that's happening right now in Santa Clarita nationally, I certainly wasn't expecting to get the call, if you will, you know, and I've always heard about the call.
You were kind of recruited a little bit.
Yeah, I've always heard about the call and I never thought it was real. I'm like, sure, you got the call. But there was a real call. And I think that our Assembly campaign made an impression on people here in Santa Clarita. And, you know, I'll tell you for me, what really got me over the edge and really convinced me was having a conversation with Kristi. You know, I called her and said, do you know about this, you know, kind of call, this kind of conversation? And she was aware of it and, you know, she, she said, here's what you have to think about Kelvin is, do you feel like your experiences, both personally and professionally, can be useful at the city council level? And then you also have to think about whether or not you're willing to take your family through another campaign.
Yeah.
Because it's tough and, and we're in a pandemic.
See, that, that part to me just makes it seem, I mean, as far as the struggles go, you know, the pandemic itself.
Yeah.
You know, and, and running for city council, I think in a lot of ways, because of the amount of money involved, and the member at large seats, and we've got incumbents that have been there for as long as they are, it's probably one of the toughest races you can run.
Yeah, certainly, certainly. I, I think taking all of that in, you know, taking in the conversation with Assemblywoman, taking in the conversation with my wife, who was a big proponent of, you have something to offer, and thinking about where we are in this moment.
Yeah.
You know, when you're called to step up, I think I would have had to sit with having that call and then deciding, no, you know what, this ain't for me, like, I'm not gonna do anything. I think in a time when so many of us are asking ourselves, what can I do? Or, you know, kind of wrestling with, I should be doing more. And so, talked to one last friend, I'm a talker, Stephen, like, I have to talk to people and really kind of.
I've noticed that about you.
Yeah. Get myself there. And the last thing that I, I heard that really pushed me over the edge, he said, your daughter will go as far as you do. And I thought that that was really impactful. And so much of what I've thought about in this election is through the eyes of my daughter, and through the eyes of the work that we do for lots of children in LA County. And, and we're just going through some tough and complex stuff. And I think now more than ever, which I sound like a broken record, I feel like I've said that in the Assembly campaign, it's gonna take leadership of competence. It's gonna take leadership of lived experiences to really get us past this moment.
Now, you're, you're a Democrat. I know it's a nonpartisan race, but you're a Democrat. One of the things we were talking about before I hit record was the fact that the Assembly race, two Republicans moved forward into the, the general election.
Yeah.
And part of that problem or part of the reason that is, is because the Democrats kind of divided up the ticket.
Yeah.
Or, or the votes. I, I'm wondering, right now, there's two city council seats available.
Yeah.
And to my knowledge, there's at least four Democrats running.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, are you worried about this?
To my knowledge, too.
I don't know, maybe somebody's hiding something from us. You know, Democrats are in the closet out here a lot. But it, it, in a similar situation, or that's, I mean, that seems a little similar in the sense that there's two seats. And you've got more than two Democrats running.
Yeah.
Because let's face it, even though it's supposed to be a nonpartisan race, it is partisan.
It is partisan. Yeah, you're absolutely right. Yeah.
So, I mean, has that thought occurred to you as far as that you might?
Stephen, it occurs to me every night. I mean, I feel like, who, who more than any other candidate could suffer from the PTSD of too many Democrats running in a race and us all shutting, you know, ourselves out? Yeah, it certainly occurs to me. Is it enough of a reason to say, no, I won't step up in this moment? No, no, it's not enough for that. And, you know, one of the things that I said was really important to me going into this race was consolidation. You know, and you may know this, there's been lots of talk of, you know, candidates, you know, dropping out or trying to get, you know, candidates to drop out. I think campaigns are incredibly personal. They take huge amounts of sacrifice. And that's only a decision that a candidate can make. And so, you know, I've learned to control what I can control and, you know, I can't worry about what I can't. And so, my focus has been on consolidating Democratic institutional support in this race and trying to leverage as much of that infrastructure as I can. And we've been very fortunate to have huge supporters behind our campaign.
Well, the, um, a lot of, a lot of the, um, let's talk about the city issues itself. Like, I mean, what, what, I mean, are you familiar, I mean, how much are you familiar, you're not from here, but you've been here for what, 10 years, I think it was?
Oh, no, Stephen. We moved here in 2016. Yeah.
Okay. Well, the first thing as a politician, you need to learn to be a liar, is to say, I've been here my whole life.
Right, right.
If not, if not physically, in spirit.
Right, my heart's been here. No, yeah, we moved here in 2016.
Okay.
But no, I love, I, I've certainly been in politics, and we talked about this during my Assembly campaign, politics and policy for the large part of my career. And having worked at the Board of Supervisors, I've certainly had to think about and talk to the supervisor about issues across the county. So, I like to think that I've, you know, I've gotten my.
That's right. You have a pretty impressive resume. I mean, let's, I mean, it was Karen Bass, right?
I interned for, yeah.
Karen Bass. Did you talk to her when she was on the shortlist for VP?
No, it's so, it's so odd. You know, I thought about, hey, maybe, you know, we can reach out and do something. The way that a, a candidate or an electa gets locked down, when you start to be considered for the Vice Presidency is, you know, I, I'm sure she was probably only talking to a couple of people at that time.
Yeah.
But nonetheless, the lessons that I learned while interning for her still guide me in my career. And, you know, even in campaigning today. So, yeah, certain.
The, um, so what, what do you think are the biggest issues with the city right now?
Yeah, you know, Stephen, I think that there is the issue right now. It's the pandemic, right? I mean, while we were setting up, we kind of talked about this a little bit, but, you know, the public health, I say, and economic impacts of, of the pandemic are real. They hit us every day when we wake up, right? It's, what does work look like? You know, will I be able to support myself? Am I safe going outside to go to the grocery store? And is my kid okay, right? Like, how is this whole virtual learning deal impacting us?
I can tell you, not, not very well.
Yeah, and, and I talked to lots of friends now that they're kind of in the virtual school thing, and how's it going? And not kidding you, everyone's just like, it's terrible. It's terrible.
It is. But I'm at the other end of it going, well, it doesn't seem safe to send them back to school right now. I mean, every, every college and university that has been sending people back, you know, it's just been a nightmare.
Yeah.
And, and in a certain sense, I just kind of go, well, what'd you expect?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, so, um, so yeah, I mean, it's sort of like, it is, well, to quote the President, it is what it is, you know, I mean.
Well, Michelle Obama also said that, too.
Did she? Okay, okay. Okay, good. It is what it is. But, um, so what, what do you think we should do? I mean, as far as, as a city councilperson, do you see trying to help the small businesses? I mean, do you have ideas about what you would do about the local mom and pops? Like, I heard, I don't know this for a fact, but I'm told the New Hall Refinery was, will be closing because of the pandemic.
I haven't heard that.
That, I mean, I don't know if that's for a fact, so don't panic, but.
Yeah, it's impacting, it's impacting everyone and everything. And yeah, certainly, I think that the city council has a role to play in this. You know, certainly, I put the public health aspects first, right? So, how do we think about our safety, right? Testing is certainly a huge part of that.
Right.
I think we have a, a role in modeling the CDC guidelines, you know. I'd love to see a city-sponsored contact tracing program.
Right.
You know, the way I, I think about the role of a city council is, we are the third largest city in the county. And I don't think that we've fully moved into that role, both in, in terms of our collaboration with the county, and just, I think, the way that we see the size and scale of our city. And so, I certainly think that we have a role to play in putting the health and well-being of our neighbors first, which I think then in turn boosts consumer confidence. Because this will be the way that we interact, right? We will be with masks for some time. We will be with the social distancing for some time.
So, I mean, but what are your specific ideas? I mean, like, what, you talked about testing and things like that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, what, what do you want to do very specifically for the health of Santa Clarita?
Yeah, I think we have to think about how we partner with our healthcare partners to literally expand testing. I think it has to be a part of our everyday kind of interaction and boosting that, that, that availability of testing. I think we have to do our own contact tracing program for our city, which means we have to stand that up. And, and the reason I bring, I bring these things up is because the identification and isolation of cases is important. And I feel like the conversation that we always have is, our numbers are low, our numbers are low, our numbers are low. Well, we're locked down, you know, for most cases. But if we really want to get up and running, those pieces will be a part of the infrastructure. So, working with, you know, our healthcare providers, working with our public health department, working with our private, you know, private partners on, on the testing piece will be important. But I don't even think that we're having those conversations. It's kind of like a wait and see, or what is the Health Department telling us? So, I think we have to be more proactive in that. And I certainly think that we have work to do with our small businesses. You know, I think that.
I mean, do you, do you agree with the idea that, that one of the things that was happening back in April, May, was the idea of whether we should open up the city again? And there was this whole argument of, well, Santa Clarita's different than Los Angeles, yada, yada, yada.
Yeah.
Do you support that idea, or do you think that we should have stayed locked down longer, or should we lock down now?
I think we have to, I, I don't like talking about it as this or that, right? Like, if we're gonna open up, then we have to do the things that we know will keep us safe in opening up, which means you gotta increase testing, right? You gotta be able to isolate, and you have to be able to track cases. You have to do the contact tracing.
Yeah.
And so, I kind of see these things having to happen at the same time. Do I think it's important to open up? Yes. Do I think that small businesses are a huge part of how our community thrives? Yes. Does my, you know, wife and our friends and our neighbors want to be out enjoying, you know, our local small businesses? Yes, but we have to do it together. We can't, it can't be one or the other. Because otherwise, you just defeat the purpose. Because then you just go straight back to lockdown, because you haven't done it in a thoughtful way. And, and I think that's the piece that's missing.
What can we do for small businesses?
Yeah, I love that question. I, you know, I certainly think, you know, one of the things I talked about in the Assembly campaign, and now more than ever, will be this, this idea of cross-jurisdictional government. There's only one entity that can print money. It's the federal government, you know. And so, we're going to need those resources from the federal governments to prop up and support our small businesses as they think about reopening. You know, the, the Chamber has advocated for the three-point plan, which really includes regulation around testing and helping organizations or small businesses, rather, put the infrastructure in place for testing, which means money, right? They're gonna need capital to help their workforce, which means money. You know, and, and they'll, they'll also need the, the equipment and the supplies to, to be safe in their reopening.
So, would you support the idea of subsidizing some of the businesses out here, the local businesses to try and, so grant, through grants?
Yeah, absolutely.
Some kind of paid program of some sort?
I think we're gonna need subsidies in so many areas, including our small businesses. And I think, you know, one of the unfortunate aspects of the PPP was that I think it was just terrible in its administration of the program.
Well, when steak and shake is, is considered a small business.
Yeah, I just.
There's a problem there.
I think the idea, and we've had this conversation before, you know, there's policy and then there's implementation. And I think it was just terrible implementation, but it was a great idea in policy. And I think we have to think about, maybe the banks are not the best administrative, you know, mechanism for these programs. I think we have to think about, you know, our city's infrastructure or our Chamber's infrastructure, to think about how we really make sure that where those small businesses are, they have access to that capital.
How do you define a small business for Santa Clarita? Is Burger King a small business?
That's a good question. I mean, you certainly have franchise, you know, fran- franchisee, fran- how do you say franchisees plural?
Franchises?
I don't know.
Franchisees?
Franchisees?
Yeah, sure. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, listen, you know, certainly, there is a capital aspect to this. And I'm not the one to sit here and say, they are or they are not. I think what is important to me is that there are certainly people behind all of those, those small businesses. And so, you know, first and foremost to me is getting us back to work. And if we have an opportunity to, to partner with a franchise that has been rooted in our community and, you know, is bringing, you know, jobs here to Santa Clarita, then let's, let's figure out how we help. But I think that that administration has to be key. And I think if we're gonna do it at a city level, with the resources from the federal government, it's gonna take us working with our Chamber, for example. It's gonna take us working with the city. It's gonna, you know, take us working with some of those small business coalitions to really get us back up and running.
Okay, um, a lot of things have changed in the past six months since the last time we talked.
Yeah.
George Floyd's death, for example, and some of the other, uh, what was it?
It's come here at home. I mean, we've seen it here, here at home. Certainly not death, but.
Do you think the city is divided?
You know, I was, I knew you were gonna ask me this question, first of all, so I've been thinking.
I'm not limiting you out because you're African-American. It was asked of other people as well, and one state senate candidate has actually brought it up, so.
Yeah, I, I don't even take it in that context. It is in front of us. Do I think the city is divided? Yeah. And I think that's unfortunate.
How's it defined?
You know, I think the idea, it's divided this way, right? It's, it seems like it's either defund the police or we support the police. And that is, you know, you're on either one of those camps, which, A, I think, is a disservice to this idea of racial justice and this idea of accountability in our policing. But I don't think it's unlike anything else that has divided our city since, I mean, you name it, what, 2016? You know, 2014? I mean, it's, it's any of those issues where.
Is the city council responsible for that, though? I mean, is that something that the city councils should be held accountable for, the fact that the city is divided?
I don't know that they should be held responsible for it, but I certainly think that they have a role in uniting our city. And, you know, what I don't see enough of are the conversations outside of council chambers, right? You're a council member, even when you're not convening a meeting, right? Meetings are for conducting the business of the city. But I certainly think that we have a role as council members outside of that in convening conversations. And I know that that's tough, right? We're certainly living in a virtual environment at this point. But I think we have an obligation to talk more and not less. And I think it's in the absence of conversation that people, you know, just continue to go into, you know, their own kind of echo chambers, if you will. We hosted a community conversation around accountability in policing. And, you know, we had what I, I thought to be a robust conversation. But I think that that's what it's gonna take. It's gonna take more talking, not less. It's gonna take respecting people's opinions of where they are.
Yeah.
And really trying to create this non-judgmental kind of safe space for people to really voice their ignorance, you know, and that has to be okay, right? Your perspective on this and the other candidates' perspectives on a George Floyd, and my perspective on a George Floyd comes from our experiences. And we have to create a space that says, it's okay for your experience of this to be different than mine.
Yeah.
But at the end of the day, what is it that we want for our own city? You know, what, what do we want policing to look like in this community?
Yeah. What do you want it to look like? I mean, what do you want to see happen for the, for the Sheriff's Department out here?
Yeah, yeah. So, I certainly don't want it to be the case where young kids of color have an AR-15 pointed at them when the community has, you know, called because they're being accosted. I think what was, what was most unsettling about that video is, I think you saw in that video the complete breakdown of what it means to be a community, right? You have residents who are literally screaming at these deputies, you have the wrong person, like, this is not.
You're talking about the video of the kids.
Yeah, yeah, please.
For those that don't know, that, uh, some kids that, if I remember correctly, they were being attacked by somebody with a knife?
Yeah, I think there was a, a report of like a homeless individual attacking the kids.
And when the police arrived, they actually went after the African-American kids that were being threatened by the knife, not the other way around.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, sorry, I didn't.
No, it's all right, it's all right.
I just jumped that, jumped into that. You know, you have residents who are, who are literally screaming at the top of their lungs, saying, you have the wrong person, and you have deputies who don't believe them.
Yeah.
I don't think that that's the idea of what policing looks like in our community. And so, I think that it is incumbent, and the council has to show leadership here on working with the Sheriff's Department to say, wait a minute. If we are going to give you a contract to protect our city to the tune of $28 million, here is what we want. And I know your next question is gonna be, well, what do, you know, what do we want?
That's not my next question. Don't get inside my head.
But I, I certainly think it, it has to, A, be a police force that looks like the city. And I say that that's important because, again, we all bring our own experiences to our work. And I think that diversity is important. And when you have, you know, police officers from different backgrounds, it makes the force better, right? There, it, it could have been possible that someone from a different experience would have driven up to that situation and said, whoa, whoa, you know, whoa, whoa. You know, let's talk to these guys, you know, maybe even I know these kids, or I know their parents, or, you know. And it, it just could have been different because the impacts of something like that on those kids will be lifelong, and, and that's not what we want. So, I, I think we have to, A, have a police force that reflects the city. And our city is changing.
Did you participate in the Black Lives Matter protest?
Yeah, I was, you know, I went down and talked to some of the organizers and was, and was down there. And, and listen, these, these activists and these kids and these youth, they are passionate about the change that they want to see in the city. I certainly think that their work and their passion is, is turned into something else, which is unfortunate, but I also think it represents an opportunity for us to really engage across all of our city and across everyone's interest. And so, yeah, yeah, certain.
All right, let me ask you a challenging question.
Okay.
Is Bob Keller a racist?
You know, I don't think that that's a challenging question.
Well, let me put it this way, some of the other candidates have danced around it.
Yeah, I'm not gonna dance. Yeah, I don't, I don't either. I think that we only have what Bob Keller has said out of his own mouth.
Yeah.
And so.
So, answer the question, yes or no?
I think that he said that he's a racist.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't know Bob. You know, I've never met him. I've never talked to him. I only know what he said. And, and I know that he has not come out to apologize for it. He has not come back, you know, come out to atone for it, so hard for me to say yes or no.
I'll tell you this much, I, I talked to him when, the one time he did a podcast with me and brought it up. And, and after, after the mics were off, he told me how much support he had in this city.
Yeah.
Based on that statement.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, Bob's the only one that can answer that question. All I have is what he said out of his mouth.
But you, you take it as, yeah, he is a racist.
I think that he hasn't come back and said that he's not.
Okay. We did talk a bit, a little bit, the last time we, we talked about race in this city.
Yeah.
And being African-American, and this is a predominantly white
Yeah.
city, uh, do you think, um, do you think that might hamper your chances a little bit in this city? I mean, do you think there's racism in this city?
I think that that's a really good question. And I think that you've heard some council members say, this is not a racist city, which.
Usually, usually when someone says, you know, it's like, that's like, you might as well be saying, some of my best friends are black.
We've heard that, too. Like, I have black friends.
I, I don't have any black friends. That way, I know I'm not a racist.
It's nothing to do with it. Listen, I, I think that race and racial encounters are personal to everyone.
Yeah.
Right? I, and we talked about this the last time. I, you know, myself can't say that I've had overt racist experiences being in Santa Clarita. I have not.
Yeah.
But I think that this moment has brought out so many stories of people who have, right? And so, I think to say that we're not a racist city is to deny their experiences.
Well, even those kids, I mean, that was based on a stereotype of African-American kids.
Yeah.
You know, that, that were, when the sheriffs grabbed them and tried to arrest them, so.
And so, you know, if you call that racism, I think our neighbors, kids, parents alike have had racial experiences
Sure.
in this city. And those experiences are real for them. And I think that we have to honor their experiences, and we have to be better to make sure that those kinds of things don't happen.
How are you gonna work with the Republicans on the city council? The, 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 one of the things that Tim bin Boystein had a problem with, even though he is a Republican, like they are, was working with them. There was sort of like a like-minded attitude, we've been here a long time, this is how we're gonna do things.
Yeah.
How are you gonna work with, if you're elected, say, Cameron Smythe and Marsh McLean and Laureen West? How, if, you know, you're, for lack of a better way to say it, in the minority?
Yeah, well, it's a very real scenario, right? With two, with two seats open, even in the best case, there are two Democrats. I mean, you know, it takes three votes
Yeah.
to do anything.
Yeah.
And so, you will have to work. And, and I always appreciate this question. It's a question about governance. And, you know, I actually had a call with Bill Miranda. He reached out and we had a conversation when he found out that I was running for office. Wait, let me make sure I get this right. I can't remember if I reached out to him or he reached out to me. I know that there was a call. I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna make anything untrue here. But one of the things that he told me in that conversation was, be mindful of how you campaign. Because you ultimately will have to work with us. And I thought that that was a fair point.
Yeah.
I think that there are fair-minded people on the council. I won't show my hand and say who I think that they are. But I, I think that, you know, certainly in some of the endorsements that I've gotten, and I know that even Cameron and I share an endorsement. I think that there will be opportunities to move forward on some things. But I think it will take a level of respect. It will take conversation. And I think, you know, it's a new territory for all of them, right? In, in this best-case scenario, I mean, they've enjoyed a, you know, unanimously Republican council. And so, we've certainly seen them.
I think almost 20 years.
Yeah, we've certainly seen them have their, their qualms about, you know, how to move forward.
Yeah.
But it will be a new territory that all of us will navigate. I personally look toward the next cycle as well, too. You know, as a council member, I will be doing my best to make sure that we continue to elect Democrats to make our jobs a lot easier
Right.
in moving our city forward. But governance for at least the next two years will be a huge part of, of what progress and what success looks like. And so, there are one or two council members that I think we would be able to potentially do something.
Yeah. What is, I mean, do you think the city council as a whole is doing a good job for the city? I mean.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I think the, I don't wanna say problem, but the reason that the, the incumbents continue to win on, on one aspect is the fact that this is a commuter town, and most people look around and go, eh, things look nice, positive budget, you know?
I don't think that's why they're winning, Stephen, but.
I said, A, reason.
There are a lot of reasons they're winning. Okay, a, a very small reason, sure. Listen, I certainly think that people move to Santa Clarita because of our open spaces, right? Because good schools, you know, safe neighborhoods. I get all, I get all of that. I think your question is, are they doing a good job on certain aspects of running a city? And the answer is yes, right? Like, we have a very fiscally healthy, you know, budget. And so, that is not, that's not undeniable, right? Yes, they're doing a good, a good job there. I think on other matters, you know, certainly on issues of homelessness, on issues of racial equity and justice, on issues of the pandemic, you know, there are certainly exceptions that I take with their leadership. And so, I think it, it's a question of, are they doing a good job on what? You know, and then you kind of go into the nuances from there.
Okay. Well, what are they doing bad? What, what's wrong? What, what? Well, I mean, actually, let's rephrase that.
Yeah.
You have specific things that you want to do as, as, as a city councilperson. What is the most important thing you want to get done? What is the most important thing you wanna get done right away?
Well, again, I think it's, it's back to your question of priorities. I think, you know, how we address the impacts of the pandemic are hugely important. And I think that that is really gonna take the council to think about how we work with our school districts, for example, and how we work with, you know, the community college districts. I'll give you an example. The, the, the virtual environment that our students are now in has exacerbated this idea of the digital divide, right? It's exacerbated this idea of technology in the home and readiness and, you know, what teachers are able to do and the role that parents play.
And even, I, I assume you're also talking about the, just the socioeconomic situation with, like, my, my wife is a teacher at LAUSD and she's dealing with the fact that some kids can only do the virtual thing on, on their parents' phone. And in some cases, there's one situation where the kid, the mother only has a phone.
Yep.
And she has three kids and they're all having to share the phone to do any kind of learning at all with the teacher.
Stephen, I mean, and the other piece, even here at home is, let's not kid ourselves, right? We have educational inequities here in Santa Clarita. We know this. And so there is no argument that you can make for me. Are we done?
No, we got a few, got a few more minutes.
Okay, what was I gonna say? We're just getting started.
I know, we're getting started.
Um, and there's no argument that you can make to me that the city council doesn't have a role to play in that. You know, our city council loves to tout their infrastructure investments, right? Like, if you want them to, you know, talk about something that they've done well, they'll tell you where they've built a park, where they've built a community center, you know? And, and so I think that we have to think about not just investing in infrastructure, but investing in our neighbors and in our residents. And I can't think of a more appropriate place than making sure that we close the digital divide. You know, if we wanna do something on infrastructure, let's think about how we, you know, really increase the technical and, and, you know, the literacy, I guess, of, of our students and their parents in this moment where we're in a virtual environment.
Yeah.
For exa, you know, for example.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, that, that was, that was my example, yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, let's, uh, we talk about investment things, like, would you have supported the purchase of the ice rink?
Good question. Believe it or not, it's not the first time I've been asked that question. You know, Stephen, I think it goes back to a matter of priorities. And, and it's not to say that I wouldn't have supported the purchase of the ice rink. My question to my colleagues, you know, had I been on the council was, we certainly know that homelessness is being exacerbated in this moment and we have a homeless shelter that we have not completed yet. Right? We know that British to Home and we've provided them with the land, but we have a capital issue, right? And so let's have a conversation of our priorities. And, and it doesn't mean that we're not even able to walk and chew gum at the same time. You know, the result of that conversation could have been, yeah, you know, we have the ability to do both. But, you know, think about you and I, right? If, if the sink is leaking, right, we're not gonna go out and, and, you know, buy curtains and say like, oh, you know, this, this is.
I use the curtains to mop up the sink.
Well, there you go.
Dual purpose.
So you're not gonna get me to say it was a bad investment. I think it, it was a question of where are we putting our priorities?
What about the Lindley Theater then? I mean, that was kind of a controversial issue because the, the, the city basically promised Lindley Theater a certain amount of money to stay open for an extended period of time. That's, in a sense, subsidies from the, from the government to, to a local business. Is that something you would have supported or?
I think it's a matter of priorities. I think the piece that we don't see with this council is, what are our priorities? You know, what do we care about accomplishing here? And you, you probably know this, Stephen, you go to any elected office and there is a legislative agenda. There are things that there is a conversation about, what do we wanna accomplish in this legislative year? And I, I just don't see that kind of forethought, that kind of planning when it comes to our council. And so, you know, you're asking a question of these things in isolation. And I think you have to take them in context and you have to take them in, in terms of what is the priority of the city.
Okay. Let's, let's just kinda do a quick lightning round.
Lightning round?
Lightning round, a couple of issues here, just.
Let's do it.
First of all, uh, would you support the idea of changing the election process a little bit? So like, maybe there was a primary and then, you know, the top five or four candidates run for office.
At the city council level?
City council level.
Yeah, I would support that.
What about districting? Do you like the idea of districting?
Let's do it, we've taken too long.
Alright, term limits?
I think term limits are good too.
How many, how many terms is enough of city council?
I mean, I think we have to use some of our models, right? We have term limits in the assembly, we have term limits at the county. I think it's like three. I think it may be three in the assembly.
That's twelve years, that's twelve years for.
Our terms are, uh, four-year terms. Yeah, I could see three.
Three, okay.
But yeah, I think term limits are a good idea. I think it was Benjamin Franklin, which I know you're gonna check me on this, who said that, you know, political office and politics is not to be a career, right? It's a place where you come to make your contribution and then you go on. And so, yeah, that's.
I think it was John Adams. I could be wrong.
Wasn't really?
I'm like, I, I honestly, I have no idea. I am just kinda going off.
I hope I'm right, I'm gonna Google it after this, just to see.
Let's just give it to, credit to Alexander Hamilton because, you know, everybody else wants to these days. What do you think about pot shops in this city?
What's your question? Like, should they be here or should they not be here?
Would you support the idea of pot shops existing in Santa Clarita?
I don't think it's a matter of, of me supporting it. It is, you know, it is legal. I think we have to look at the regulations around it. You know, I certainly know that the county has imposed some regulations, suspending operations. But they're suspending it while they work through the regulations. They're not suspending it indefinitely. And so I think as a community, we have to have a conversation about, well, where are they? How do they operate? What are the rules around it?
I hate that answer.
Why? That's the truth!
We had to have a conversation. No, tell me how you feel. Would you, would you sanction the idea of, if you were on a vote in the city council and they were gonna decide if, if, if they were gonna issue licenses for pot shops, would you vote yes or no?
Well, it's legal. I don't know that you can, that you can not have them operate.
Doesn't allow, uh, uh, in the, in the city, you cannot have pot shop.
And you know why?
Why?
Because they're still waiting on.
Oh, is that, okay. Honestly, I thought, I thought Santa City, Santa Clarita had a ban on that.
It's because they're still writing the regulations.
Well, then just forget I asked that question.
Okay. Okay. It's not indefinite. It's because they're still putting the regulations in place.
Alright, alright. Now, I, I, it was my understanding that the city had decided that they were not gonna allow pot shops.
You, you have to write the regulations and then that's how they will operate.
I gotcha, okay. Um, what would you do to solve the homeless problem out here? I mean, it, it is solvable. It's not like, it's not like Los Angeles.
Certainly.
The, the, the homeless count out here is probably a thousand.
Yeah.
So what would you do?
First, you have to show leadership. It's just not a priority, Stephen. I'm gonna, I know you hate these answers, but I'm gonna tell you, that you look at the history of our city dealing with, with homelessness and they convened a task force. And you know what the recommendations of the task force were?
What?
To convene another task force. It's like, that's not you dealing with this issue. So we have to deal with this issue. I said, it means that we have to build a shelter.
Yeah.
We have, you know, and a shelter solves sleep, right? A home resolves homelessness. So we, again, have to walk and chew gum at the same time. We have to build a shelter and we have to think about our affordable housing stock. But your ability to maintain a home because, comes because you have a job that's able to support your ability to, to pay your bills. And so we have to think about the economic aspects of, of training and employment. And there has to be a continuum in place to do that. And if that means rental subsidies and making sure that we're maximizing our, our Measure H dollars and where the city needs to step up with money and with financing to do some of that, then we, we need to. But no more recommendations for a recommendation. I certainly think we have to be better about our outreach and thinking about how we connect our homeless neighbors to, to services. But, you know, simply put, this is, this is not rocket science, right? The models are there for us. I think we have to get serious about doing it.
What about doing something like what, I mean, particularly with the, the amount of homeless in this city? What about doing something like what Salt Lake is, Salt Lake City did, which was actually build housing for the homeless and then worry about finding them jobs and placement and everything like that afterwards?
Well, it's a housing-first model. I certainly support the housing-first model. I think we do have to think about, you know, again, shelter resolves sleep. A house resolves homelessness. And so, yeah, we know that we need more housing to resolve our homelessness issue, so.
Now, the, the, the fear that a lot of people seem to have, and Bob Keller being one of the people and Cameron Smythe, I think Cameron has actually changed his opinion.
You know, Cameron's doing a lot of changing lately.
But, uh, was that if we solve the homeless problem or if we build a homeless shelter out here, it becomes a magnet for other homeless to come out, to come.
God, Stephen, haven't we heard this argument forever?
Hey, man.
It's as old as the republic.
I am, I'm waiting for you to answer.
It's as old as the republic!
Yeah. I didn't say I agreed with it. I'm just telling you that's the argument.
I'm grabbing my ears. There's just nothing behind that except for, God, I hate, I mean, it's just ignorance, it's just fear, right? Like, it is not the mark of a civil society to let our neighbors sleep on the street, right? And so even if that's the case, right, like, let's just go there, which I feel like I've had to do a lot.
Yeah.
Let's just go there. The argument is that if you build a shelter, people will come to sleep in that shelter.
Okay.
Tell me where the problem is if they're sleeping in a shelter, like.
Well, I think, I think Bob Keller, not to single him out, but some of the more conservative people that are against or have not been a big proponent for a homeless shelter uh, have a fear that people from Los Angeles will go, hey, great new shelter in Santa Clarita, let's head out that way.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I think that that's a level of ignorance. And my thing is, if we have homeless individuals, because if you know anything about the work of a homeless service provider, it is a huge accomplishment to get somebody off the street and into shelter.
I do know.
Right?
Yeah.
And so I think it, it just demonstrates a level of ignorance about how homeless services work. Because, you know, when I'm talking about outreach teams, I'm talking about the relationship development that it will take to convince people it's not safe for you to be on the street. I mean, we know the research about the effects of living on the street. So A, if you get someone off the street and into shelter where they can be connected to services, where they can be connected to housing, that's a huge accomplishment. And so, you know, if, if we build a shelter and people are sleeping in it, I think that's a good thing.
Alright, let's, um, it's time for the Ryan question.
I love the Ryan question. I was thinking about that.
Okay.
Yeah. How's Ryan doing?
Ryan is good.
Yeah.
He's dealing with the, uh, the virtual learning and, uh, me putting him on the spot with questions, you know? I'd say, what, what do you wanna ask this person? So, and then he actually, uh, not to get on a tangent about my kid, but he, but he's really smart in the sense he goes, well, what can you tell me about them? You know?
I love that.
So my, my, my kid's question is.
Hey Kelvin, why are you running for something again?
Cause I believe I have something to offer. I believe that my experiences, both personal and professional, position me to make impact in my city.
Okay. What is your favorite concert?
Oh my God, I think Ryan asked me this last time.
This isn't a Ryan question, this is my question.
Oh, this is your question?
Yeah, this is my question. I'm curious what your favorite concert is.
Like, concert I've been to?
No, concerts that you haven't been to, Kelvin.
Well, you don't go to concerts, you don't go to concerts in the pandemic.
Yeah, no, but in general, like in your life, you've been to a few concerts.
I've been to a few, I think the last thing I told you last time was, I thought the last concert I went to was, um, Anita Baker. I think I said that last time. That was the last time I went to a concert. It was a really good concert.
Favorite movie?
I told you this, Free Willy.
Free Willy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alright. Uh, are you a hunter or a gatherer?
In what sense? Like, literally?
I don't know. Man, these, these are just like, you, you Google, you know, before I come in and do these, it's like, Google silly questions.
I didn't ever thought about that question. That's an I don't know.
Alive or dead, who would you most want to have dinner with?
There are a number of people.
Pick one.
Alive or dead? Well, right now Barack Obama.
Barack Obama, okay, alright. Yeah, I, I would think he would be a pretty interesting dinner, you know, so. Uh, regardless of where you feel about him politically, the one vibe I've gotten or, actually, the people I've spoken to that have actually met him, just say he has a vibe of coolness.
Well, here's what I would wanna talk to him about.
Yeah.
Is, I would want to understand from him how he sees our country post his presidency, right? Like, I think there was so much around, you know, this is when he was president before the election of like, oh, we're in a post-racial society, which I never, you know, thought that. But to see where we are today, I, I'd just be interested in hearing, you know, his thoughts on it. Cause he's been relatively quiet. I mean, we see him now in the campaign, but if you think about the last three and a half years, he's been relatively quiet. So I just, I wanna get his thoughts on it.
I, I would like to know how he's managed to be quiet, you know? I mean, it's, it seems to be the Trump agenda to just tear down everything he's done, you know, so.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear your best Bob Keller impersonation.
No. I learned from Christie that I could say no on your podcast.
I'll have to talk to her about that.
She does it a lot better than I do. Uh, no.
No, just not gonna do it, huh?
Not gonna do it. We could sit in silence until you get to the next question, but, no.
Any tattoos?
Yeah, remember I told you, I got this one?
Yeah.
No, don't, don't, don't get tattoos, they're just not.
Why did you get yours?
Cause I was a kid doing kid stuff, crazy tattoo stuff.
Crazy tattoo stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
Crazy tattoo stuff, by the way, playing Coachella.
Why does anyone get a tattoo? It's just crazy tattoo stuff.
How old were you when you got that one?
As, and I'm gonna say this, like, I'm super, like, it was in my twenties, I can't remember. I mean, I'm in my thirties now, but.
Not that much difference, so.
In my twenties.
He would actually be one of the youngest city council members I've ever liked.
I think that's awesome.
Have the record, but I think he was elected at twenty-eight or twenty-nine.
To the city council?
To the city council, yeah, yeah, so.
I was asked if I would be the first black person elected to city council in Santa Clarita. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
I think he would be.
Yeah. I don't think I'm the first black person that's run.
No, well, I mean, Selena Thomas is running, she's mixed race.
No, like before, uh, before this cycle?
Um, well, uh, uh, no, not of personal color.
Yeah.
I mean, Moslem John, John Harry ran in two thousand fourteen. And Dr. Kosch, of course, and Selena, uh, as well.
Exciting times.
Exciting times. Let's get your elevator pitch as to why someone should go for you.
Uh, I believe that my experiences, as I've said, um, at the top of our, our, our time today are what position me, I think, to lead in what is a very complex moment. And I like to think it's a result of my, my personal lived experiences and my professional experiences. And I think that that's what our city needs at this point, is someone who can balance both of those and, and lead with a competence and an emotional intelligence that, that gets us through what will be a very tough time.
Excellent. And I usually ask for an evil villain laugh, but I think I actually like to ask for a Joker laugh. Which is kind of an evil villain laugh anyway.
What is a Joker laugh?
Like the Joker, uh, in Batman.
Does he laugh?
Yeah.
I don't even know what that sounds like. You'd have to go first.
Well, I don't know. I think that's it right there.
Well, there it is. There it is.
Alright Kelvin, I, uh, vote on November third, I wish you much luck in the election.
Ballots drop on October fifth, you can start voting as, as soon as you get your ballot. And, uh, hey, thank you to you, keep doing this. It's certainly a public service and.
All seven of my listeners.
I wanna encourage you to keep doing what you're doing. It's really important.
I appreciate that. Alright guys, we hope you enjoyed the talk.
You've been listening to the Talk of Santa Clarita. Listen to us on iTunes, SoundCloud.com, YouTube and Stitcher. Barring a life event getting in the way, a new podcast is available every Tuesday. Questions, comments and show ideas can be sent to thetalkofsantacarita@gmail.com. You can also call or text us at six six one five oh five eight six seven two. That's six six one five oh five eight six seven two. Follow us on Twitter at the Talk of SC or on Facebook, Instagram and YouTube at the Talk of Santa Clarita. You can also visit our website by going to www dot thetalkofsantacarita dot com. This has been a production of Radio Free Santa Clarita Incorporated, a five oh one C three nonprofit organization. To donate, go to radiofreessantacarita.org slash donate. Radio Free Santa Clarita, on the net and on the air, and we're very much aware.